I'd like to call the August eighth, two thousand and eighteen meeting of Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Councilwoman, Dr. Selly will be absent this evening. Mrs. Wittes?
Here. Please let's stand for the pledge allegiance. Ready again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. Presentations, there are none this evening. Reading and approval of previous minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes of July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Consideration of ordinances, public hearing, and final consideration. This is the second reading of ordinance thirteen dash eighteen entitled an ordinance, amending ordinance three twenty-five dash three K, schedule twenty-eight, I'm sorry, eighteen, three two-five four-four, Handicap Parking, Grand Avenue. This ordinance was introduced on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? If there is anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding this ordinance, please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the third reading of ordinance thirteen dash eighteen entitled an ordinance, amending ordinance three twenty-five dash three K, schedule eighteen, three twenty-five forty-four, Handicap Parking, Grand Avenue. I need a motion to adopt on third and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance fourteen dash eighteen entitled an ordinance granting a five-year tax exemption to Sharon Hockman for a development project of property located at ninety-one Ocean Terrace, designated as block three oh-two, lot two. This ordinance was introduced on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Is there anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding this ordinance? Please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. No one?
Request one-minute notification, Vincent Lepore, thirty-three Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Ordinance fourteen eighteen, today being August eighth, two thousand and eighteen. This ordinance concerns a provision in the Matosa Settlement Agreement. For the record, the minutes of April twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen city council meeting, the recorded votes on the similar contract provision were no by Pallone and Selly on ordinance six dash eighteen and ordinance seven dash eighteen concerning forty-two and forty-four Marine Terrace respectively. Both Pallone and Selly together on that evening fired four bullets at that Matosa Settlement Agreement with their votes, no votes. That Matosa Settlement Agreement resulted from the city's ugly and deadly venture into seizing people's properties to hand over to private developers to make profit. Those properties seized, many were from senior citizens, sending those seniors to financial ruins and their graves. Pallone joined that Schneider record four years ago, partnering with Mary Jane Selly, who had a hand in that bloodbath. All along prior to April twenty-fourth, that Matosa contract provision had been approved until Pallone and Selly decided otherwise. At the last council meeting on the record, in response to an inquiry by a Matosa representative, Mayor Pallone respite it and stated there is now a difference of opinion after explanation by City Attorney Renaud, the new city attorney. One would ask, what was the difference between the explanation of former attorney, City Aron, and former city attorney, Renaud? But the answer, it doesn't matter. The bottom line is, the track record shows, on this matter, both Pallone and Selly can't be trusted. So tonight, counsel, if you vote to approve fourteen dash eighteen and honor that contract provision, fine. If not, you'll get blasted by the Institute of Justice out of Washington, DC that'll send this council and mayor spinning. It's up to you. It's your call for junk government.
Mr. Lepore, would you like a response?
No.
Thank you.
The record speaks for itself.
You could talk for me now.
Sure. Would you want me to?
Yes.
Sure, absolutely. I, as you know, I did vote in the past. I actually would credit Mr. Lepore with talking about resolution two ninety-two dash oh-nine, two seventy-two dash oh-nine, which I had never received before. Asked for, received it, asked Mr. Renaud to review it. As much as Mr. Lepore, you know, has his, addresses it his way, the reality is that we were on the same page. I didn't realize, or I wasn't told at the time prior to the, prior to that, that the city had expended five hundred thousand dollars and had to pay that out, as you know. And also, not being on council when all this took place, I wasn't a big fan of eminent domain as Mr. Lepore was. Didn't have a say at the time, but I just thought that I should have been given that. I reviewed it, I asked Mr. Renaud to review it, I don't know if he has a comment to make. And then we discussed this again with all of council. And, and again, I went back to my original thoughts on this for those reasons.
I appreciate your, I'm Lori Vandetti, thirty-eight Ocean Terrace. I appreciate you coming out last, at the last council meeting and explaining what Mr. Renaud-
So, so I just want to be clear, Mr. Lepore seems to, he's joining me with the whole eminent domain issue of pre, when I was on the city council, when in fact, it's just the opposite. Because my concern was, like I said, I wasn't told at any given time that the city had paid out five hundred thousand dollars. And, 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 I don't know, I hope, you know it better than any of us.
No, I, I just came up-
I hope that explains it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, and I, I don't think this city council, you know, I, I'm a Matosa member. It's, it's, I can't believe how long it's been, and you guys are new, so, you know, it's a fresh slate for me. And I don't think that's ever going to happen in, in the city of Long Branch again. I don't even know if there's that much property left in the city of Long Branch to take by eminent domain. But it was a horrendous time in our lives, but I, that's not, you know, you guys weren't there and, you know, I wish you luck in going forward, and I just hope you, you know, you learn from the, from the, your predecessors that, you know, it was a horrible time in people's lives. That's all, thanks.
And, and you know, I do want to, I do want to make a point too, that I have reached out to Mr. Lepore on several occasions, I have called him recently, I often try to speak with him, and I get no response whatsoever. And to this day and continuing forward, I'll continue to call him, I'll continue to acknowledge him and ask him questions and hope that he responds, because I think the important thing now, moving forward, is for all of us to just work together. And I think, and, and I respect Mr. Lepore, because actually, as I said, he was very aware of two seventy-two oh-nine. And he's very aware in the, in the years past of things that I've agreed with. As a matter of fact, we agree most of the times. And so, you know, I'm a little disappointed, I wish that we could start a communication again, and I hope that he will.
Alright, thank you very much.
I have reached out to him as well, and I'm also ignored, so, you know, he's welcome to meet with us and discuss any concerns that he has at any time. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I need a motion to, um, close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is the, um, second reading of ordinance number fifteen dash eighteen entitled an ordinance authorizing right of way to be vacated.
No, you need to take a roll call.
I'm sorry.
No, you have to do the third reading of the ordinance fourteen.
Sorry, I lost my place, I apologize. I need a motion to adopt on third and final reading and advertise according to law. Should I read the rest of this?
No, you need a motion.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance fifteen dash eighteen entitled an ordinance authorizing right of way to be vacated, Seaview Avenue, Area A, situated in the city of Long Branch, Monmouth County, New Jersey. This ordinance was introduced on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding this ordinance? Please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. No? Okay. I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This is the third reading of ordinance number fifteen dash eighteen entitled an ordinance authorizing right of way to be vacated, Seaview Avenue, Area A, situated in the city of Long Branch, Monmouth County, New Jersey. I need a motion to adopt on third and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance number sixteen dash eighteen entitled an ordinance authorizing right of way to be vacated, Seaview Avenue, Area B, situated in the city of Long Branch, Monmouth County, New Jersey. This ordinance was introduced on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding this ordinance? Please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Lori Anne Vandetti, thirty-eight Ocean Terrace. I'm just a little, I don't know, maybe someone could explain it to me. I tried to read the ordinance a few times and looked at the maps. Is this the area that's painted yellow, that makes like a ninety-degree area? Is that what you're giving to Stevola?
Correct. And what, is that, as a result of the street alignment, it changed the lot alignment, so there was a vacation that was needed. There's, I guess it's three swaths of land that, that had to be exchanged.
So are they, so that, that ninety-degree angle, they're going to be able to build on that, or is that just going to be?
No, it, well, I don't, I'm not sure if you, if you saw, if you saw the map that was attached?
I saw it last, in July, and it wasn't that clear to me.
Correct. So, there, there's a bigger overall map, that, that triangle that you're, they're looking at is actually a relatively small piece of land, so it's actually just becoming part of a lot, an existing lot. It's not a new lot.
No, they're just going to add it to the-
Correct.
And what does the city-
Two portions that, that we're giving to them for the street alignment, and one portion are giving back to us that goes into the street.
And what are they giving back to you?
A small sliver of land, they're both very, all three are very tiny pieces, just to square up the lots and arrange the, the sidewalk to, to navigate around the properties.
Correct.
So any monetary value going, exchanging hands? It's just a exchange of properties?
Correct. Well, and actually, it's a, it's a, it's a vacation of a portion of property, and they're giving us property back.
A part of the agreement, they're doing a number of improvements, lighting, underground utilities, bricklayer crosswalks, there's a bunch of things as part of the overall agreement.
Alright.
The circular, you know, the circular road there at the end there, they're going to do some significant improvements to that.
At the end of Seaview Avenue, there'll be a bricklayer decorative circle for around about.
Yeah, we were supposed to have a Matosa memorial there, that's why I'm asking about it. That was our initial, it used to be a grassy area, and that was, we were going to have a, a, um, we were going to have a memorial there, or not a memorial, but, you know, something to, to honor the, the people that fought for Matosa. And I think Stevola should do something like that, because they, they, um, they are getting this property on the blood of, of our, of our work. And they never were part of our, our, our fight, they never offered any money to us, so that little section should be a dedication to the Matosa people, because without us, they wouldn't be able to do this to, they wouldn't be able to have these twelve properties.
Thank you. Anyone else? I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This is the third reading of ordinance sixteen dash eighteen entitled an ordinance authorizing right of way to be vacated, Seaview Avenue, Area B, situated in the city of Long Branch, Monmouth County, New Jersey. I need a motion to adopt on third and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance seventeen dash eighteen entitled an ordinance authorizing dedication of property to establish a proposed highway, Seaview Avenue, Area C, situated in the city of Long Branch, Monmouth County, New Jersey. This ordinance was introduced on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding this ordinance? Please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Lori Anne Vandetti, thirty, thirty-eight Ocean Terrace. The only, the only concern is the use of the word highway, and I don't know why that would be used. Can someone explain that? Kind of, kind of makes it sound-
It's, it's, it's the, it's the word used in the statute. It's just, there's how you describe creating a road. So it's just, it's a, it's an ancient use of a word, so.
So it's still going to be a two-way, it's not going to be-
No, it's not going to be a, you know, limited access, it's not going to be the parkway.
It's fifty-three square feet that's being dedicated back to the city. That's all it is.
To allow for the, to be added to the roadway, that's all it is.
Alright.
Not all.
Thank you. I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the third reading of ordinance seventeen dash eighteen entitled an ordinance authorizing dedication of property to establish a proposed highway, Seaview Avenue, Area C, situated in the city of Long Branch, Monmouth County, New Jersey. I need a motion to adopt on third and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance eighteen dash eighteen entitled an ordinance providing for the licensing of reward programs for the payment of taxes by a Long Branch program. This ordinance was introduced on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding this ordinance? Please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. No one? Okay. I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is the third reading of ordinance eighteen dash eighteen entitled an ordinance providing for the licensing of reward programs for the payment of taxes by a Long Branch program. I need a motion to adopt on third and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. There are no ordinances for introduction. Public participation, participation for resolutions and all general comments. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If anyone in the audience has any comments to make, please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Good evening, Mayor Pallone and councilmembers. My name is Anita Clayboeing. I live on one sixty-one Garrett Drive. I am speaking tonight to ask our mayor and councilmembers to participate in an event sponsored by the Monmouth County Democrats called Once With The Leaders. On Saturday, August twenty-fifth, at the American Legion Hall in Neptune, the people would make bids, and whoever guessed the highest guess to have lunch with Mayor Pallone or any of the councilmembers. I would like to see our mayor, councilmembers, take whoever wins to a restaurant in Long Branch and not just in Pear Village. It could be on Broadway or any other location, like that the Portuguese Club, or, or the, there's a Colombian restaurant, whatever restaurant is around Long Branch. All proceeds will go directly to the caucuses of the Mom and Dems, such as the Black, Progressive, Women's, and Disability Caucuses. Tickets are ten dollars each for anyone who would, who would like to participate. So if any of you want a ticket and/or have any other questions, please feel free to see me after the meeting or contact the Joint Caucus Committee via email or phone number posted on the flyer, the flyers I passed out. Thanks so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do anyone else that would like to speak?
Jody Ben-Haim, I live on eight seventy Ocean Avenue in Elbron. The corner of South Lake and Ocean Avenue has two-sided parking, and we've talked to many police officers, because especially weekends in the summer, there's a lot of people for the beach, and they're parking on both sides of the street. And I have pictures, you can't, there's no way to get two cars through when there's two cars parked on both sides of the street. Last Sunday, it came to a head. Twenty cars were trying to get towards Ocean Avenue, and somebody was trying to get in, and they were backing into Ocean Avenue backwards to get out and untangle the mess. And if a fire engine had to come through, or an ambulance had to come through, it's out of the question. Police officers are constantly telling us that they've mentioned it to you, or whoever, proper channels, and we haven't seen any change. And we need signs there saying, whatever side, that is the appropriate side, one side of the street parking only. It's all around Taconacy Lake, South Lake, I think North Lake has the same dimensions also, but I'm seeing it a lot on South Lake because it's access for the beach. So, and then you see a stroller, sometimes a person with a stroller, and then there's a car trying to squeeze through, and there's cars parked on both sides, and it's very frightening for somebody walking with a baby, a person on a bicycle can't fit through with two cars parked and one car going through. So it's an accident waiting to happen. I think somebody should look into it.
Thank you, yes, we will.
Do you want pictures, you'll just do your own thing?
I've been down there.
You've been down there, but nobody's done it in years, we've, we've mentioned it so many times.
I'm sorry?
We've mentioned it many times.
Yeah, we have a lot of streets that have the same issues, we need to look into that, so we will. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
I understand, thank you.
Hey, my name's Ricky Eldridge, I live at one oh nine Weston Avenue, Long Branch.
Rick, could you raise, uh, raise the mic just a bit? Thank you.
Yeah. I should know better. Anyway, I'm here as a member of Long Branch and Monmouth County and New Jersey's artistic, creative community, and I'm here to voice my disapproval with the way the person that took Barry Stein's place in coordinating special events, especially when it comes to procuring musical acts that perform, especially in West End. I can be very specific about something that that person did to affect me and my standing in this town. I don't need to get into that now. That person has done some underhanded stuff to make her look good. She's taken responsibility for things that she hasn't done. She's overpaid bands that aren't worth what they get. Let me give you an example. No, you know what, I'm going to get down to it. I created an event called West End Funk Fest, alright? It was my brainstorm, I went to Adam Snyder and talked to him about, you want to eat something different in Long Branch? We need something besides three-chord blues, play it over and over again the same old way, yesterday's news. Anyway, something that people can dance to and have fun with. He agreed, we came up with this concept, and then he handed me off to the person that took Barry Stein's place. Now, let me remind you, during Adam's whole administration, they never gave me a chance to perform at West End Park. I'm very good at what I do. Nineteen sixty-nine, I was voted best artist and musician in Long Branch High School. I'm sixty-seven years old now, and I've gotten better throughout the years. I was in a band called Father Fox, we were the premier funk band in Monmouth County. This was nineteen seventy-two. I left that band, I was recruited by street people, a local R and D singing group that was signed to Delight Records. That's where I learned about the funk. You can't fake the funk. Anyway, I got to play twice at this event, event that I created. I think I did a pretty good job, I put a completely original set together, brand-new music, stuff that nobody ever heard before, exciting. I had first-class musicians playing with me, and I got a reasonable amount of money to do it. She saw a fit to cut me out of it. I don't know why, but it hurt, and it's bad for Long Branch. I want to represent. I'm good at what I do, I'm as good as anybody around here, and I want to help give something back to this town, I was born and raised here. Anyway, so she gets this guy from Allenhurst. First of all, someone born and raised in Allenhurst has no funk. I got paid six hundred dollars, she's paying this guy fifteen hundred dollars to play for forty minutes. That's what? This guy would have to play for three hours at La Costa Lounge and make five hundred dollars. I don't know what, what went on there, but that's just, anyway. I just feel the need to draw attention to this, and I'm willing to work with council to form a group of people to change the cultural temperament in this town. All the, the bands that play in West End especially should be homegrown, local talent. There's a lot of talent in Long Branch. We don't have to farm the stuff out to the Jersey Shore Jazz and Blues Foundation to go find bands to play in West End. We can do that on our own. I mean, these guys come, and they set up their little kiosks, they have their fifty-fifties. It's all at our expense, I'm a taxpayer, you know, it's like, they won't let me play. Yeah, I'm crying about something, but it's very, it means a lot to me, and I'm good, I want to represent- I want to represent this town. Maybe I'm not funky enough. Maybe I'm not handsome enough. Who knows? But I just, this is the first of a series of me coming to the mic and talking about this issue that we have. And I'm here to improve this town. I love it. I was born and raised here and there's opportunities that haven't been exhausted yet within this town. And I will work and do whatever I would have to do to uplift the music in Long Branch and stop overpaying people that don't deserve it, that don't even live here. And I understand the person that took his place doesn't even live in Long Branch. I also understand that the person was hired to be a secretary and not a music purveyor, anyway. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Baron Rodriguez. I live on 231 Branch Port Avenue. Hi. This is my first time being involved in any kind of city council and thing, so it's a little nerve-wracking, so I apologize if I come off that way. I also want to apologize for my etiquette in the workshop. I took it literally as a workshop and I thought I was going to learn the process around it, so I'm sorry about that. So some of the things I wanted to touch on was, I wanted to know if we could include in the web, in our webpage, if we can make it more of a format with a better user interface. So I noticed, everyone knows that people search for stuff on their phones. People rarely go on computers, either a phone or a tablet, but when we pull up the webpage on our phones, it's not meant for that. So it's really hard to navigate through it and maybe we could make the search engine powered by Google or Bing, depending what's in the budget, I'm not too sure about that. With that being said, I also wanted to know if it's possible, like I said, I'm very, very new to this and I like it, it's like kind of energizing and everything, especially witnessing the workshop and everything, I like a lot of the stuff you brought up, is if maybe we could funnel the city's analytics in there, because I'm really analytic-driven, that's how I make decisions, it's better for me to be more informed. So I wanted to know if we could just make a funnel of analytics there, so like, I chose Long Branch, me and my wife chose to move here because it was a happy medium for us, we came up from up north. She liked Manhattan, I can't stand congestion. I like the suburbs, she doesn't like the suburbs, so the shore was where we were at the medium. And I wanted to start laying my roots down here and I wanted to know everything about it, you know, hence making a better decision. So if the website could just funnel analytics, like how schools are performing, crime rates, just the general street traffic, just all the analytics where you could filter through Excels and hyperlinks and everything, I think that'd be great and we could be leading on that, like another, other towns are doing that. The other thing I wanted to do, touch on, it was more of triggered by what you brought up in the workshop. So I helped pilot an employee recognition program in my own company, so if you guys want feedback, I could help you with that. I think the key to stuff is onboarding, having a good onboarding experience for a new associate when you identify talent. So we had an ambassador program and it basically shows a person around the facility, maybe shares lunch with them, show them what's a good spots and everything, that's really, really good for onboarding because having a high turnover rate in a private entity. With the employee recognition program, spontaneous recognition always works best when people just get praised just by walking by and you'll get people's buy-in and you just get people produce more naturally because they want to do things for you and you get more people diving for a ball versus when the ball's dropped, everyone just raises in the hand saying, "It's not my problem." So if you guys want feedback on that, I do it for a whole district, it's just extra resource for you. I want to thank you for the driveway. When I moved here, my property driveway was all cracked and then one day it was just getting done, so awesome. That was great, thank you. And then the other thing, the question I had was, I thought that was pretty proactive about the active shooter program. So the question I had was if any of the training is including de-escalation, you know, and if some of the items that are being purchased are non-lethal, because I heard there was items being purchased, I just wanted to make sure that we're including de-escalation training with that, because I think people have a bad day and we deserve to give them a chance to de-escalate a situation. What I do want to say is, this is really cool that I see so many people here, like I thought, I think it's really great. And I'm an optimist, so that may become annoying, but that's how I do problem solving, I consider myself a big problem solver, hence what I do for my company. So everyone thinks they may have come here with a problem or issue, but I see that everyone attended this because they care, which is great. So I like to, I'm really enjoying that I'm part of a community where I see so many people caring and that's why, one of the reasons me and my wife choice, chose, like again, I said I'm nervous, chose to come here and start laying our roots. But those are the things I wanted to touch on so far and that's really all I had to add.
So, thank you so much for being here, actually, we really appreciate it. And thank you for the feedback on the website, because it's one of the things that's very important to us in terms of making it more user-friendly and interactive and be more informational. So that's good to hear and that's something we plan to do and to work on. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the biggest thing, if it just auto, you don't have to make it a app, maybe an app down the line, but if it auto-formates to a phone interface, it's so much easier.
And as far as Councilwoman Wittes's suggestion of the employee recognition, as you could see, any help or advice we could get would be appreciated as well.
Absolutely. I believe in human capital and if you invest in people, everything else seems to work out. And then if it's possible, maybe on the next meeting, I could just get the answer to that question versus if there's going to be a de-escalation part of the training for the officers.
Speaker Chief, right in the back.
I just grabbed the chief. Feel free to.
Is there going to be a part of the escalation training?
Active shooter's not really meant for that. Okay, active shooter is when someone's actually shooting someone. We do have those things here. For Long Branch PDs, we do have different systems having to use, but active shooter training is not meant to, uh, the escalate anything when they're actually shooting. If they're not shooting, then yes, we will talk and speak to them and do all the things that we have to do, but if they're actually shooting, we don't really spend time talking to them.
I just got one follow-up question. So if they pause in the middle of shooting, do you activate the escalation or what? Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm done, but thanks again. I appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm excited to hear. Rice Canedo Maza, hi. I'm really energized by this guy because as you know, I'm miss-analytical, so yeah, I think some improvements to the website would be great. Long Branch resident. So first, some compliments, DPW is outstanding, so, thank you. I called about a hole in the road and like a week later it was fixed and one day I saw a fridge on the side of the road with the door still on it and they responded really quickly because I'm like a really nervous person, so when I see something like that, I get worried about it and they responded really quickly, so I just wanted to thank them for doing that. The woman, I don't remember her name, but she even called me back to let me know they took care of the fridge, so I wouldn't have nightmares about it. So please, Mr. Hayes, if you could extend that, I'd appreciate it.
I will, thank you.
Also, love the suggestion boxes and I've seen a lot more communications through the City of Long Branch Facebook page. Also, this is echoing, sorry, is that better? So I see a lot of more updates through the Long Branch Facebook page, also on the city website, which is great. I saw something for Long Branch Day and I was wondering, is this the first time that we're doing this?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell me a little bit what it is? Because we were all kind of wondering.
Sure, it's a, it's a collaboration between the library, the city, the Board of Education, and Long Branch Think Tank. And the idea is to celebrate just the diversity of the city. There's going to be a parade that's going to start from the Anastasia School that end up, that ends up in Slogan Park and it's going to be Slogan Park, library, and portions of the municipal complex. And again, it just celebrates the city, the city's history, the city's diversity, and that's going to be from food to entertainment to education and...
I think that's great. I think it's great. I, I just, I didn't know if this was something I was supposed to know already and it missed something or not, so it'd be great if you could put something out there kind of explaining what it is. I'm sure it's on the list of many things to do, but folks were asking about it and I think...
If you'd like to attend a meeting, Rice, there's, I believe I can get you the date, but I think the next Community Day meeting is next Thursday.
Okay.
And I don't want to speak on behalf of the group, but on part of it, I think they would, you know, welcome your attendance if you wanted to.
Yeah, I think there are people wondering, because I saw free tables for nonprofit groups.
Yes.
So I'm sure we'll see places like motions and, you know, lots of like, you know, organizations participating. It's like, you know, lately I'm seeing a lot more communications coming from these groups like the Rotary Club and PR on Broadway and there's Shore House and there's a lot of like really great community organizations that folks in town can link into and I'm, I, you know, I have a 17-year-old, so I try and, I'm trying to be more aware of these things, so I think it's really wonderful. I love that there's going to be a parade and hopefully the marching band, right? You know, I'm a band nerd, so...
I think they're asking all the kids to dress in the, in their, either uniforms or dress of their culture, you know, it's going to be interesting.
Okay, and then, okay, one thing I wanted to ask about, there's a situation down by the trestle in Elbron, which everybody in this town kind of like waits for when it rains, and that is for a car to go under the trestle and get flooded. People are continuing to drive through the floodwaters there, you know, it gets up to about three feet and even, like, there's always, you know, the big yellow cones and orange cones around there, but no one ever really moves them anymore and even if they do move them and put them there, people still drive through it. So is there anything that can be done there or does that lie on deal and JCPN? Because it's a weird kind of border area where you have the train trestle that goes over South Lincoln and underneath there, it's flash floods. So a couple of weeks ago, there was a taxi cab that drove through, a minivan, and there was, happened to be a soldier in her, you know, vet and she like pulled the door open or something and I called another taxi for her. You know, police came, fire trucks came, and everybody responds quickly, but it seems like a lot of resources for something and it's several times a year, like people literally wait for this to happen in Long Branch, you know, because it's so typical.
So as you know, it's been a problem for years, if not, if not decades. We put up some money a few years ago that I think improved it significantly, but it's still obviously a problem. Maybe Mr. Hayes can comment. We also have our new city engineers here who, I'll make sure that they take a look at it as well.
JCPN is over there too, so there's like the train tracks and transformers and tons of draining issues. The, you know, that's a really bad traffic area, one was thinking about traffic in Elbron and bikes and stuff. It's really dangerous over there. People fly through the stop signs. It's just, it's really just dangerous all around, all the time. Kids are like coming close to getting hit by bikes and now people are parking even closer down the hill towards the trestle. So it's just getting more and more dangerous. And buses, like buses go through there and they think they can get through it and they cause traffic jams. I'm sure Jason knows, like, they go there, block the traffic and, you know, bus drivers will still come down the road and try and make a U-turn or go through it, so it is a problem.
Yes, we did a fair amount of drainage work upstream at the outfall line going out to the ocean along those properties, along the deal border, that same drain line.
Yeah.
And it's, it's helped it drastically, but it, it just, it, when we get a large rain and you get a lot of sheet flow, there's just nothing that can keep up with it.
Yeah.
So I know the police, as soon as there's a heavy rain, officers are there blocking it off and folks, you know, inevitably go around the barricades, like you say.
Yeah.
But we'll continue to explore ways to make it better.
Now, do they get tickets when they go through these barricades and?
Yeah, I, I think...
I mean, the sign is flashing, like three feet of water.
I would say that probably the embarrassment of losing their car was enough. I would doubt they would get a ticket, but I wouldn't speak for the police.
Okay, because that gets really expensive, you know?
I'm sure it's very expensive.
And it was bone-dry during Sandy, too.
Yeah.
So, two more things before I go. One, you know, I will always take this opportunity to bring up that cops application, the grant again, and ask if you've had a chance to review it and have a session on it mostly because it does, you know, incorporate so many different partners from the city, from the school and the city. So please, you know, here again, ask me about that. And our attorney, I just want to warm you up for some rent control talk.
Excellent.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I look forward to it.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Diana Moltar. And actually, my address is no longer Long Branch. Our family had the property, if you see the big crane on the boardwalk, that's where our property was. And, and we bought that, the family bought the property in the 50s, so I've been, as I mentioned to Mayor Pallone not too long ago, we're, I still feel very much like a Long Branch resident, even though I'm living in Manhattan right now. Actually, the reason why I'm here this evening is partly to pay tribute to a fellow political activist, Jerry Scarono. I don't know, this is a new city council for me, because for decades Jerry and I would be in front of the other city, the Mayor Schneider City Council and I, with the exception of John Pallone and Dr. Chelle, these are new, your new faces to me. The, the death of, the killing of Jerry is really, was a shock to me and it's, it didn't occur that long ago, it was only about, I think it was the 14th of June, if I'm correct. And what concern, what I found, I would like to, I wanted to explore a bit, was the gun control laws and how that, if that at all affected the killing of Jerry Scarono. Now, I've had conversations with the Long Branch Police Department and the Prosecutor's Office in Freehold. And what I've learned is that most of the information about that incident is still not, it's not public. The case is still apparently technically open. However, I did find out a few things. The, of course, I had heard very, not too long ago, that the state of New Jersey has some of the strictest gun control laws in the country, which is terrific for me. And I did have an interesting conversation with Detective Hess of the Long Branch Police Department and he agreed with me that it, he's very much in favor of strict gun control laws. And in fact, I, what I didn't know is that even he, as a detective with the Long Branch Police Department, is required to submit a lot of ID information before he can even purchase ammunition for himself, which I find interesting. Now, the only other thing I've, one of the things that I have learned about the Jerry Scarono case is that the gun that was used to kill Jerry was not purchased in the state of New Jersey. It was out of state. This may or may not be helpful information in the future, but I'm really, as I said, I'm really interested in gun control law as it is enforced in, not only in the state of New Jersey, but certainly in the city of Long Branch. At any rate, these are basically, that's pretty much all that I, as I, I've learned about the whole incident at this point, because as I said, the case is still considered technically open and there's very little public information available. But I think that when it comes to gun control, the public really needs to know as much as it can about gun control and of course, as it relates to the Second Amendment. And of course, I learned not to... Amendment. And of course, I learned not too long ago, when I read the, the Constitution from beginning to end, I was rather surprised to find that the Second Amendment is the only amendment in the Constitution that gives the reason for the amendment. It's the only one. And it's, of course, each amendment is one sentence long and the Second Amendment is just one sentence, but the, the first part of that sentence gives the reason for the Second Amendment. And from my point of view, the Second Amendment is, should be, it's irrelevant. And I'm, I learned not too long ago that the former Supreme Court Justice Stevens agrees with that. It's, it was written in, of course, seventeen ninety, seventeen ninety-one, which was less than two decades after seventeen seventy-six. And at that point, when it was written, there was no militia. So the, the writers of that amendment said, we, a well-regulated militia being necessary for the security of a free state, therefore, we need to, people have the right to keep and bear arms. But that, of course, was seventeen ninety, seventeen ninety-one.
Thank you.
No militia, no militia, no police, no Air Force, no Marines, no, nothing.
Thank you.
So I just hope that the city council will keep an open mind when it comes to any legislation relating to gun control.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. And I, I just wanted to say, when I, when I see you, I think of Jerry, and it's a very warm feeling. And I also wanted to point out, I know we knew Jerry well, but you weren't here, but all of the council got to know Jerry very well. And, and we felt very dearly about him. Thanks.
Vincent Lepore, thirty-three Ocean Terrace, request one minute notification. In response to Mayor Pallone's statement to the Matosa representative on ordinance fourteen dash eighteen, we're going to have a little fact check for the record. Four years ago, John Pallone joined the Schneider team on council. Adam Schneider being the national poster of eminent domain abuse. On that Schneider team was Mary Jane Selly, councilperson at the time that the bloodbath of eminent domain took place and had a heavy hand in it. On April twenty-fourth, both John Pallone and Mary Jane Selly recorded no votes on the Matosa contract provision. Mary Jane Selly going so far as to state on the minutes of April twenty-fourth, by the record, quote, "I'm aware of what the agreement was, but that doesn't mean I have to agree with it," end quote, even though she was a party to the agreement. Thirdly, on the remark by Mr. Pallone concerning responses to Mr. Lepore, "I get all my responses on the public record or on recordings, as is being recorded now, out in the open, not in private conversations." I have a letter here from the city attorney Reynon, dated August eighth, excuse me, August third. First line, "The mayor and city council have asked that I formally respond to your communications of July second, July twelfth, July twenty-sixth, and July thirtieth, two thousand eighteen." The July twenty-sixth letter was to remind the council of the July second and July twelfth letter, to which I didn't receive any responses, on the public record in black and white. And this correspondence was addressed to the council, not Mayor Pallone. The July thirtieth letter is very interesting, and I'm going to read it. "Your letter of July thirtieth contains a request that council undertake administrative criminal investigations of the prior mayor, Adam Schneider, and public officials serving in his administration. First, the law does not provide for administrative criminal investigations. Secondly, the mayor and council have no authority to initiate a criminal investigation. That authority is solely within the purview of the police, county prosecutor, and attorney general. If you believe you have, you possess evidence of a crime, you must contact those entities." Mr. Reynon, your answer cites no statute or law as a basis. This answer is unacceptable. I want council to listen to the following on the record, as a response to Attorney Reynon's answer. I cite New Jersey Code Title forty, municipalities and counties, forty colon forty-eight dash twenty-five, municipal investigation committees, power to issue subpoenas, service of, quoting, "When the governing body, defined as the municipal council, shall have appointed a committee of its members, meaning councilpersons, upon any subject or matter, meaning civil, criminal, or financial, within its jurisdiction," jurisdiction meaning Long Branch, "the committee may issue a subpoena, a testificendum, or subpoena, ducis tacum, to any person within this state to appear before it to give testimony or information required. The subpoenas may be served by an officer of the police department or constable of the municipality."
Mr. Lepore, you have one minute.
End quote. Now that I have cited the power of this council to conduct a criminal investigation, I am again going to answer a question I asked on July eleventh. Will council authorize an investigation of Adam Schneider and officials of the Schneider administration? And I don't want you hiding behind your city attorney. I want a response from the council people for the sake of transparency. Doctor Vogt.
Excuse me, Mr. Lepore, I.
I want the council to respond. This is the sake of transparency. I don't see one council person.
I'm, I'm happy to be transparent. We're doing it at a public meeting.
I'm at a public meeting and I'm directly asking the council for answers.
Here's the.
You were not elected. The council was elected. The council has clearly been defined the statute.
No, Mr. Lepore.
It's well educated.
You're gonna have to let me talk.
No, I don't. I do not have to let you talk. The question is not addressed to you, Attorney Reynon.
Okay.
And don't try and double talk it because I've had this corroborated, this statute, by legal authorities.
Mr. Lepore, you have time.
They do have the right. So council, you don't want to pursue the answer? Junk government continues.
So, council, just for the record, Mr. Lepore read a statute and I don't know whether you caught the fact that he added words to it. So the council has, by the way, under the Faulkner Act, the council has the authority to conduct a, an investigation of any, anything that goes on in the municipal government and to subpoena people to come before it. But you don't have a right to conduct a criminal investig- investigation. Those investigations are limited to the police, the county prosecutor's office and the attorney generals, or the US Attorney's Office, if it's a federal crime. So the answer is, is that you can't just, you know, when, when you read a statute, you can't like pause and then add words to it. So it, it's not a, you don't have the right to, to conduct a criminal investigation. You don't have a right to bring criminal charges because you're not a, an entity that can bring criminal charges. You can conduct a civil investigation, let's call it civil, to determine whether or not there, there's something. But let's say you discovered evidence of a crime. You can't conduct a criminal investigation. As soon as you get to that point, you have to turn it over to a, to a law enforcement. And that was the point I was trying to make.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
That's your interpretation, Mr. Reynon, not the legal interpretation of others.
Is there anyone else?
Lori Anne Vendetti, thirty-eight Ocean Terrace. I got three things. This is probably going to be down on your list, but for next summer. I'm just bringing, bringing, bringing it to your attention. I'll probably bring it back, you know, as we get closer to next summer. So I'm a big dog and animal advocate. I, I'm a vice president of animal rescue. And I have three dogs of my own. And I can't remember when it changed, but we used to be able to walk dogs from Labor Day to, well, the day after Labor Day to Memorial Day. I forgot when it changed, but now it's, all of September, you can't walk a dog on the beach and all of May. So we only have the cold months to walk our dogs on the beach. And I would just ask, you know, like I said, I know it's far down, but this is just, you know, a concern of mine. I live near the beach and I walk my dogs on the promenade, not on the promenade, but on the, the tar area. And in the summertime, that tar is hot for dogs. And you, you can't walk a dog. They burn their pads. So it, you, you, there's no place to walk our dogs. And on that pathway, it's, they have bike paths. The, they, it used to be the bike path was in the middle. Now the bike paths are on the side. And the middle is, I guess, where you're supposed to walk your dogs or just walk or, and the, it's not a big thing because the bicycles go around, but the pathway is, the bike pack way, pathway is on the side of the lawn, the great lawn, where the dogs want to go smell. So I would just ask if we, we could maybe change the beach access to dogs from Labor Day or day after Labor Day to the day before Memorial Day. And maybe add, like, after seven or eight o'clock at night during the summer. I mean, no one's on the beach at that time. It would be great for me to walk or anyone to walk a dog at nighttime, obviously leashed, you know, when people aren't there. I know, you know, during the day, you don't want dogs walking the beach, but eight o'clock at night, it's the light out for us to walk a dog. And it would be nice to, to enjoy the, the summer with your dog on the beach. It's just, again, it might not be a big concern to anyone else, but it is to me. Seaview Avenue Beach, I live right there. We're the only beach, I think, that has porta potties. And we've had porta potties for years. Maybe the Stavola people could put that in their, their, their plans to maybe next year to get a trailer. You know, I know you can't have a permanent bathroom there because I don't know if it'll fit anywhere, but maybe one of those trailers would, you know, a few stalls, because it's one, one porta potty and it's one, one handicap porta potty and it'd get really bad. I mean, I walk home to go to the bathroom, obviously. I live right there. But that beach is getting crowded. And two porta potties isn't, isn't doing it. So next year, I think, and people are paying the same price that other people are paying to go to other parts of Long Branch beaches that have nice bathrooms. Just a thought. Again, the Ocean Avenue, I mean, Ocean Terrace, Seaview Avenue, Marine Terrace, our properties are, Stavola's building twelve properties. That's going to reduce the parking again on that street, on, on Ocean Terrace and Seaview Avenue. There's going to be twelve homes there with driveways and we're losing more parking. I, I've talked to the mayor about this when he was a councilman, and I would ask maybe, again, to consider some, somewhat of permit parking during Labor Day to Memorial Day. It is horrendous on our streets. I mean, those houses don't have one car. They have five cars and they only have one car garages. So it's, it's the families that have multiple cars. I mean, I have two cars as well, but, so you're multiplying that by twelve new homes. There's not, and there's not going to be any, any parking in our area. So I would just consider some type of permit parking again for the summertime.
Lori, very good suggestions. Thank you. And I just want to let you know that we've already looked into what we can do about permit parking in the future.
All right.
So we don't have any definitive answers at this point, but it's something we're interested in exploring.
I know it's going to be difficult, you know, but maybe something, we could come up with something. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Rick Garlop, forty-three, Slocum Place. First thing I wanted to do was to thank Mr. Hayes and the Traffic Department. I had reached out to Mr. Hayes through email a couple of weeks ago about the intersection of Chelsea Avenue and, and Fourth. Cars would park very close to the end of Fourth Avenue and with cars trying to come out to turn onto Chelsea, they couldn't see and they'd have to creep out. And it's been, you know, there have been accidents, but it's been a lot of close calls. The curb had actually been yellow, but it had worn away. Within a couple of days of, of my communication with Mr. Hayes, it was yellow again, and we're already seeing a difference. So thank you. Also like to, to thank the city on behalf of my neighbors who came to the last meeting to speak about the metal pieces that were sticking out a little bit in Slocum Park. Once again, they, they came here and they spoke about it. Within a few days, DBW was out there and, and those have been, you know, covered up or cut off so that they're not a problem anymore. So thank you.
Rick, you can thank Mr. Hayes and Mr. Zuber for that one as well.
Great. So thank you. I would also like to, to applaud the administration for the Hundred Day Plan on the website. I think it does give a really good idea of, of what you guys are planning. And there's a lot of great things on there. And I, I hope that you're able to achieve a lot of them within the first hundred days. So the last thing I just want to talk about is the, the placement of the new paintings by the boardwalk. I want to talk about, I don't want to talk about the aesthetics or cost or anything about that, but the placement. So over the last couple of years, there were several events where dozens of volunteers, in coordination with the Environmental Commission, in coordination with the city, and through a generous donation from the Surfers Environmental Alliance, planted beach grass along the east side adjacent to the boardwalk. This is considered a vulnerable area. There's, there's code within the, the city code book that, that speaks about flood management in certain coastal areas and that sand dunes should be protected and that if there's any sort of construction that's going to be proposed in those areas, that those sand dunes would be, would be considered. So I just wanted to bring it up because I, I think that it sets a bit of a precedent that if we're saying these are vulnerable areas and we would not want someone outside of the city to come in and to, to do anything to them, that those, those paintings are in the, in the beach grass. You know, Mr. Mayor and Dr. Selly, you've always been very supportive of the Environmental Commission. I have every reason to believe that the, the new council is supportive as well. So as a member of the Environmental Commission, I would ask that the, the council and the administration reconsider the placement of those paintings. Thank you.
So, so Rick, let me, let me address that if I may. And I'll take some responsibility for that. The idea was to obviously put the pictures back up and, and, you know, many people thought that that was a good idea. So I did not, former councilwoman, Vastelli, mentioned basically what you're saying. And then I happened to see Richie Lee, who's also on your committee, for those who don't know. And I asked him to take a look as well and just assess what he thought. And I might add, appreciate it because, as you know, my son and, and I have been there every, planting many of those things. And I looked at it myself. And yes, it does disrupt a couple, but, you know, it was close to the boardwalk. But in any event, after, you know, Rich took a look at it, I said to Rich, I said, "My understanding is that they're going to be, the plan was to be, for them to be removed in October, anyway, due to the, you know, exposure to the weather and so forth." And so the last conversation I had with Rich, when he called me, I said, "Look, if," he, he was going to talk to your group. I don't know if he did. But basically what I said is, "Look, if you feel that we should take it down, we'll go ahead and take it down. But the plan is that we would be taking it down on, in October, anyway. So whether we took it down now or in October, I think the disruption would be the same."
Would, yes.
But I basically left it to, for whatever you decide to do, we'll certainly abide by.
Okay.
So when, when you come up with that decision, let me know.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, Lillian Grauman, three ninety-six, Second Avenue. This is for, for next year, obviously. We're in August and there's not a lot that's going to get done now. So as we prepare for next summer, some of the things I think we, we need to address, I don't know if the Maintenance Department of Public Works has a line striping plan going to what was said about Chelsea Avenue, on Second Avenue and other areas that are near the beach. You have cars that park right up to, if it's a cross street, they'll get right up to that, up to the cross street and the end of the curb. So delineating the, a, a yellow stripe from the, from corner, however many feet it is, I don't know, ten, fifteen feet, it, it needs to be delineated. There's so many cars that just park haphazardly all, all up and down Second Avenue and all the side street, Cottage, South Bath, North Bath, Pavilion. I know Mr. Vera and I had talked about the bump outs in West End from Ocean Avenue to on Brighton, Ocean to Second. I mean, it's horrendous. And, and I understand, you know, the reasoning why it was done, but it's just not working. If you have a car that's trying to park and you have a large truck that comes down that particular section, it's only a one-way. You're not going to get two vehicles between Ocean Avenue and Second on Brighton. uh, Second on Brighton. Um, and that's pretty much it. I mean, these are things, I have a lot of things that, that I can, you know, I'll, I'll talk to Stanley about just the suggestions that I have. I don't need to bring it up here. Just maintenance items. Site clearance for signs. I had spoken to, um, Jason earlier. It's not our responsibility, but on an Ocean Avenue, you have a lot of those speed limit signs that are covered by trees. And there's a lot of that, too, in other places in Long Branch. We need to look at our signs to make sure that they're clear to the public so they know what the speed limit is, where they can park. Do we need to replace some signs? Um, and the other thing is bicyclists. They have to follow the same rules as, as motor vehicles, and they're not. In fact, I see some of the specials, the, um, summer, uh, patrols that ride opposite, they ride the opposite of the traffic. They should be riding with traffic. They're riding on the sidewalks. And that goes for anyone who rides a bike. You know, it, it's dangerous. And there are, and again, Brighton Avenue from Ocean to, to, um, Second Avenue, it's tough for a bicyclist to drive, to ride down that, that street if someone's trying to park, or if somebody opens the door, there's not enough room. That's it. Thank you. You guys are doing a great job. That, that Hundred Day Plan on the website is excellent.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, first off, I would like to say that I'm very glad that the Facebook Live through the city is active and seems to be working fine. So although I wasn't here the last council meeting and was late for tonight, I was still able to keep track of what was going on. Thank you for that. Um, my main reason for being here tonight is my concern with, um, Taconacy. Um, I have a printout from the Clearwater, uh, goes back to two thousand and eleven. And I'll just read certain excerpt, excerpts from it. Um, one of the interesting things, this is quoted, is "No one has claimed it," says Ed Dugos, who was head of the Friends Group and the Eaton Town Environmental Commission, "about why the coalition was focusing on cleanup of the Whale Pond Brook watershed." Here it is, again, quote, "One of the prime ocean exits of the watershed, and there is something on the order of eight to ten oceanfront lakes, and it is probably the least developed and offers the best chance for rehabilitation and for being a real spawning ground for herring and other game fish that spawn there and live there their early lives." End of quote. So the, the article goes on about the Ross Island Stone House, uh, and the work that's been done there. Again, this is from two thousand and eleven. Um, also, it states how Whale Pond Brook, Monmouth University, the Long Branch Environmental Commission, Faith Titlebaum, Seal Mancini, and some others, representatives, um, who have been working hard to establish a, a healthy, uh, environment at the Whale Pond Watershed and the Ross Island. And this Ed, and I'll spell his name, it's D.L.U.G.O.S.Z., um, says, quote again, "By placing a fish ladder there, um, of the dam of the Taconacy Lake, we can turn back the hands of time and have a real natural state there. When they dammed it up as a reservoir, they stopped, stopped the spawning. Now that it is so brackish, it does not make sense to have it as a dammed-up lake." So currently, there is a dam there. Now, I'm going to fast forward to two thousand and fourteen, uh, an article from Word on the Shore. And, um, there was, just again, I'm just going to focus in on a few spots here. The developer, um, had to get several variances for the property, um, the Taconacy construction that's going on there, um, so because of the height requirements and the flood zone and so forth. So the project engineer, Dan Doherty, says that the first finished floor will be seventeen feet above the flood zone, two feet higher than the city's flood zone ordinance requirements. So, um, he explains that the developer will also be working with the city to fix the dam on the site that was damaged by Hurricane Sandy. The city has applied to FEMA to help fund the repairs. So Planning Board Chairman Ed Thomas says that the dam is important because it allows city officials to lower the water of the lake during a storm. Quote, "We need the dam to control the height of the lake," says Thomas. "Otherwise, we could lose the lake altogether." Board member Kevin Hayes says that the dam will have to be built before any construction on the site can be, begin, again, in quotes, "If it doesn't get done, the project won't happen." Um, end quote. Members of the Whale Pond Brook Watershed attended the meeting and called for the elimination of the two southernmost oceanfront homes on that property.
Patty, you have one minute.
Thank you. "Because the lake was breached during Hurricane Sandy." Um, so Caffrey is also requiring the developer to create dunes between the homes and the beach to maintain an access path from Ocean Avenue to the beach, which will remain open to the public. The concrete access pass, path will be located along the northern portion of the property, and there will also be five public parking spaces near the entrance of the site. Um, so a fish ladder is supposed to help the fish come back into the lake, um, during season of spawning. Um, and the fish ladder, from what I saw today, does not look like it is near what it's supposed to be doing. Although I understand right now it's too late. The spawning is in early spring. I'll, I'll let you see the pictures that I have here. Uh, the other question I have is, uh, from two thousand and eleven, according to these, um, environmental people, uh, they were worried about the quality of the lake and of its dying. So I, I, I don't know if we should allow the developer to be in charge of that area, as I was told at the March council meeting. Uh, the raising and the lowering of the water is in their hands. Um, this is a prime, uh, a very special area that there's fewer and fewer of. And I think City of Long Branch has to step in and care for this. Besides the fact that the five public parking spots are not available, um, they're fenced in. And I didn't take pictures of that, but just driving by, anyone can see that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Patty, I was, uh, you know, you and I have discussed this in, in the past, as well as others. Uh, you know, I've, I've tried to stay a little on top of it. Mr. Hayes has told me that, that it's, it's now complete. Um, if you don't mind, if you, Mr. England is here, who's, is the, the new city engineer, if you have any questions or maybe, Bill, you haven't. Have you been over there?
No.
No. No. So maybe you could have a brief discussion with Mr. England, and I'm sure he'd like to get up and, uh, get over there and have some opinion on some of the things you're talking about, because I-
Okay. I'll let you see the pictures.
The spillway and the dam are all completed as of this week. The path, the developer wants to install the concrete path on the access.
Yes.
But the Imperial House is currently under a notice of violation because their drains from the garage are draining onto the path. So they expect to be done next week with that. And as soon as they're done, the developer seeks to put the path in. He can't put the parking spaces in yet because he's still doing site work over there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Yep.
Is there anyone else? Okay, I need a motion.
I'm sorry.
Yes, good evening. My name is Renee Moore. I'm a Long Branch resident. Good evening to City Council and Mayor Pallone.
Good evening.
I wanted to bring up a couple of things that you may already be working on. Um, I-
Renee, could you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes. A couple of things that you may already be working on, and that is, uh, more bicycle paths for the city. I did a little research, and I've come up with about, I'm going to leave it with council, about twenty-one reasons, ideas, when it comes to bike lanes and why we should have them, the health benefits, um, how, why they're safer for the public as well as for drivers. And I'm going to, as I said, I'm going to, um, leave that with you. The second thing is, I've discovered that, uh, Monmouth Beach has done this, uh, single-use plastic, getting rid of that. And I, uh, like to see, uh, the city look at, uh, following their, uh, model, if you will. And I've included the ordinance, um, for the language and to see where they were going, uh, with, with the, uh, single-use plastic. And I have documents, uh, a little research, um, as to how that is to be done. And I spoke with Kevin Hayes, I think, last year about a few of the parking spaces on Hendrix may actually belong to Gregory apartment, um, uh, property.
On Hendrickson Avenue, right?
Excuse me?
Hendrickson Avenue, ma'am?
On Hendrix, that a couple of those spaces may actually belong, belong to Gregory. And perhaps the residents who are extremely strapped for parking, it's a bone of contention, and, uh, it gets nasty if we could get any more parking that belonged to us there somehow.
Well, we just repaved that and restripped it a few weeks ago.
Yes. That's, did I say thank you for that?
No, it's okay. It's okay. And then after your meeting with me, I had a meeting with the, um, housing authority, and, uh, I passed on your suggestion about trying to find more spaces. So it's up to them to do. It's, it's on their property.
All righty. Thank you. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna cut my time short if somebody else wants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Renee, we were originally scheduled to have, actually, Council President Wittes had met, or with the Environmental Commission, and we were scheduled to have a workshop meeting about the single-use plastic bags. And I believe it's going to be rescheduled for the next meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
September, yeah. September twelfth.
I'm, I'm, you know, I'm really concerned with the speed also. You know, Ocean Avenue is fast, and I'd like to see us really get ahead of the game and have this, you know, uh, really embrace cycling for the city so that, because there's already a lot of bike riders. But they're a little bit in danger because we haven't really marked, uh, you know, specific space for them. So I thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you. Pleasure. Hi. Um, I need a motion to close the public participation-
I move.
-in this meeting.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we're next to the resolutions. We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda. Need a motion?
So moved. Check it.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the listed applications.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. And next is the, uh, Ms. Laney's Business for the Good Order. Councilman Dangler?
Uh, yes, just two, uh, brief things. Um, in regards to the young lady that spoke in, um, the parking on the Second Avenue. Um, I was going to mention that as well. Maybe besides the, the yellow, uh, curbing that we could do, also put some signs up and, uh, double and or triple the fines for parking if you're in that area. Because I know on Broadway, I have witnessed lower Broadway, um, when you're trying to just, uh, pull out from, uh, from Second Avenue and turn on, you can't see because, uh, people are trying, trying not to park in the parking lot that's available. And, um, and it's just dangerous trying to see. So, um, I know the summer's almost over, but once, if we could get some signs there to say no parking, and then just, uh, throw, uh, throw that area and, uh, and taking them, uh, because they shouldn't be parked in there anyway. We have plenty of parking right now, we do. Who knows what next summer we'll bring. But just for safety purposes. And my other question is, um, who is our, which I forgot to ask that earlier today, who is our EEOC officer for the city?
Affirmative action, I believe it's the-
Equal opportunity?
Yes.
Yeah, sir. Um, I believe it's personnel officer.
Yes.
It's not her, it's me. I'm not sure which one's listed.
Okay. Um, can, can we, uh, Mr. Mayor, can you let, let me know who, which, who went that is-
I know who it is, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilman Viera?
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming. I was going to welcome Mr. Rodriguez to our town here, but I guess he left. So welcome him anyway. And, uh, to chief role, but, um, the, um, the, this weekend was a very busy weekend over, uh, streets over there. And I saw a lot of police action, and they were doing a great job. So that, I'll leave it like that, and good night.
Thank you. And Councilman Vogt?
Um, I think that we all appreciate your comments about the Hundred Day Plan. We would encourage you to please give us some feedback. Um, the website, what, something was just added to the website in terms of a phone number and, um, person that you can contact. So, uh, it's all about interaction and working together. So we're real interested in hearing, hearing what you have to say. I just want to comment also about the gentleman who was up here, uh, sitting up here, um, here for his first time. And, uh, his observation was, uh, you know, that, uh, no matter the tone, uh, we're all here because we love Long Branch. Um, Ricky, your passion, um, speaks volumes, um, and is, uh, just very heartwarming to hear. I think, I, I think it's, just supports the whole idea that we're here to make Long Branch the best place that it can be, uh, working together. We appreciate it. And good night.
Thank you. Mayor Pallone?
Um, sure. I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight. It's a great audience, and I hope it continues. Uh, Patty, to your point, I'd like to say, uh, thank you. I know you advertise the meetings on, on your website and, um, and what's going on in the city. And that's appreciated. Uh, I just want to point out a couple, um, point out or mention a couple of interesting events that are taking place in the city in the next week and a half. This Sunday, the twelfth, at the Great Lawn, is the Sixth Annual Brazilian Festival. That's between eleven AM and, and eight PM, for those who might want to attend. Uh, on Saturday, the eighteenth, this is the second annual here in the city Surfing for Vision, which is a wonderful event at, at the Great Lawn. That's at about nine fifteen, uh, where people with little or no vision have the opportunity by our, our lifeguards and others from the shore area to, uh, give them the experience of surfing. Uh, Saturday night, we have the Car Show, uh, the eighteenth as well. Uh, that, I believe, is about seven o'clock. And then the last is on Sunday, the nineteenth, at eight AM, is the Ray Locata Swim. And that's, I think, in their seventeenth or eighteenth year. That's a one-mile swim, uh, walk that's very interest, that's great to partici, and the proceeds from that fundraiser go to, um, uh, equipment on the beach and for the police department. And it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a, it's a very nice and fun event, an important event. So thank you again for being here this evening.
Yeah, and I'd like to, uh, thank everyone. And Renee, I love your idea about more bike paths in Long Branch. I think it's a great idea. And, uh, thank you again for coming this evening, and we look forward to seeing you in two weeks. Thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Me.
Well, that's why I turned to look at you.
Yeah.